Okay, it is being livestreamed on YouTube, so I'm good. But let me make Mr. Harris co-host.
Hello, Internet.
Okay, and Mr. Harris is now co-host.
That is correct. Thank you very much.
Okay, so. It's 12:06. I'd like to go ahead and call us to order.
One more moment, Madam Chair. I'm getting a doubling. I gotta figure out where this YouTube volume is coming from.
Okay.
So give. Madam.
Yeah, whenever you're ready, you let me know. There's actually no rush. I just.
Ms. Harless, you will want to either mute the YouTube stream window or just close it. Yeah.
I got it. Okay, I figured it out. I'm perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we will be called to order at 12:06 PM. Madam Secretary, if you don't mind, would you do roll call for us?
Okay, certainly. Madam Chair is here. Is Mr. Smith here? Not presently. I'll note when he does come. Mr. Blankenship? Okay, he's also absent. Give me one sec. Mr. Bowen?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Mr. Nikala? It looks like those two presently are absent. Mr. Ruffo?
Here.
Mr. Benner?
Present.
Mr. Duque?
Present.
Mr. Eklund?
I am present.
Ms. Eiler? Mr. Ford? Ms. Gabbard? And we were told that Mr. Nana would be absent. Mr. Watkins?
I'm here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Cowan?
Martin Cowan, present.
Mr. Dasing? Mr. Hall? Okay, those two are absent. Mr. Napamucino?
Present.
Mr. Pankey?
I am here.
Mr. Tunjevich?
Good afternoon, present.
Ms. Iena Scavitch?
Present.
And then we also have staff of Mr. Harris and then Parliamentarian Richard Brown. So, Madam Chair, Mr. Smith of the Officers is absent. Out of the at-large, Mr. Blankenship, Mr. Elliott, and Mr. Nikala. Out of the regionals, Ms. Eiler, Mr. Ford, Ms. Gabbard, and Mr. Nana. That means for Mr. Nana, Mr. Napamucino will be sitting in for him. For Ms. Gabbard, Mr. Clark will be sitting in for her. There is nobody representing Region Eight.
Looks like Josh Smith has joined the call.
Okay, I will mark him as present.
Madam Secretary, just as a note, it's Mr. Pankey filling in for Ms. Gabbard for Region Seven.
Oh, I thought I had said that. I am so sorry if I did not. So the only region that's not being represented presently is Region Eight, as Mr. Ford and Mr. Hall are both absent.
Madam Secretary, as you are now host of the meeting, you will have to be the one to elevate Mr. Smith to co-host so that he has control of his microphone.
Okay, let me find him on the list, and I will do that. Mr. Smith, are you hiding? Can you? I need to get you bumped to the top of the list somehow, so I can see you.
I see him in the middle of the participant list. Red.
Ah, let me look here. Okay, I see. I got him. Thank you.
I'm gonna remind everyone.
Thank you.
I'm gonna remind everyone, if you want to give public comment, get your hands up now. We're certainly gonna call on people at some point. But happy to hear from people.
Is Mr. Bowen seeking to be recognized?
I believe so.
I am.
Just thinking that there would be more than one hand up. But if there's not, that's totally fine. Okay, so I think we are done with roll call now. So now we're gonna move to public comments. And refresh my memory, did we set that for one or two minutes each?
We did not set for anything, Madam Chair. You said you wanted to see how many people and then make that decision.
So I guess right now, we're gonna keep it at two minutes. We should probably circle back to this at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with everyone, and provide public comment towards the end. So what I'd like to do is allow for two minutes right now, and then one minute from each person at the end. So if that's okay, let's go ahead and hear from Mr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some housekeeping for next week's meeting. As many of you know, I am in the process of permanently moving from New Jersey to Florida. I'm in Florida right now, working on the House down here. I was hoping I'd be finished up by the weekend, drive to DC for the meeting, and head back to New Jersey. There is a possibility that I may be delayed and have to stay down here a little longer. So there is a possibility I will not be at next week's meeting. There is an agenda item which is not bylaws mandated at all. It was just a courtesy. I had sent an independent audit to all the new board members as my last duty from the prior Audit Committee. I was asking for 10 to 15 minutes, just to answer any questions that people might have. We're more than happy to table that at this point, to save some time for next week's meeting. And as always, I'm available for any questions that anybody has, as is Mr. Tenevich, who also served on the Audit Committee with me at the last term. Also, I would like to let everyone know, I am still interested in serving on that committee again. I've been on that committee since September of 2018, the last two terms, and would love to serve again as the LNC-appointed member. With that, I'll yield the rest of my time, Madam Chair.
Mr. Bowen, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Mr. Bowen, did you submit an application?
I'm going to do that tonight. I will have that in by the end of the weekend, yes.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. If there's no other public comment, then we're gonna go ahead and get into discussion on the one and only agenda items. So let me think about the best way to do this. Do we have any executive committee?
Yes, Madam Chair. There's a person in chat who I believe would like to comment. He was asking for clarification if he could, and I believe he can. It's Carrie Baldwin.
Oh, for public comment? Absolutely. We can hear from Carrie Baldwin.
Do I need to elevate him, Mr. Harris?
I think that's her.
I am looking to, since the hand is not raised, I'm just slow getting.
So the best way to help us out with this for everybody is you wanna go down to the bottom of your screen and find the little smiley face that says reactions. Click that, and then right above it, it'll say raise hand, and that helps us find them.
And Ms. Harless, to your general question, you do not need to elevate during public comment. You simply click the Ask to Unmute button, and then the individual will be prompted to unmute themselves.
Thank you.
I'm. So I'm a resident of New Mexico. I'm born and raised here. I've been a libertarian, philosophical libertarian, since 2008. I'm here because I'm interested in what's happening with the party, and I've always been disappointed in the New Mexico chapter of the LP. So I'm hesitant to join the LP, to be a dues-paying member on account of what's been happening. I was. You know, I watched the livestream of the convention and was incredibly disappointed with the way it was handled. By contrast, just the way this meeting has been handled is night and day. So my membership with the LP really hinges on what happens with the with the New Mexico affiliate, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Okay, any other hands raised right now? I don't see any. Just gonna remind everyone that we'll circle back to to public comment. I am admitting Lenia Gabbard right now, by the way. Someone did. So Ms. Gabbard is present with us. Okay, so we need to get into this and start to understand what happened. There's a lot of people on the call who are obviously very interested. I would like to ask if there's anybody who is a member of the New Mexico Libertarian Party's Executive Committee present with us today, because I would like to allow them an opportunity to speak first. And so I don't hear anyone speaking up. If LNC members or anybody who's a member of the New Mexico LP wants to scroll through and just take an extra look, let me know. Drop something in the chat. Ms. Harless, go right ahead.
I'm just waiting to speak when it's time for LNC members.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Tyler, I didn't, says I didn't see anyone from the LP and in board. I am looking through the chat. And I apologize on having mics and cameras blocked. It's just because it gets so unruly. If we unblock it and we hear people's crying, babies, dogs, neighbors, you just forget to mute. But anybody who gets asked to call, who's called on, we're gonna absolutely unmute you. Okay, so I don't see anyone from the board. I think the next best thing for us to do is probably jump to members of the New Mexico Libertarian Party and hear from them. So there's a couple of things that we need to discuss, right? What happened? I got at least 10 messages from different members, maybe more, who were very upset about the New Mexico Libertarian Party Convention. The discussion about their bylaws and Constitution and national member involvement as well. There's a lot to sort out. We're gonna try to get through it all. I don't know what the perfect order to do is. So we're just gonna start by hearing from some members of the New Mexico Libertarian Party. So if that's you, I know that it's, I know that, there we go, Tyler's got his hands up. So let's hear from Tyler first.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, so just giving my account of what has happened.
Yes, please.
That's okay. Okay. Yeah, so I joined up with Mises Caucus probably in now, probably somewhere around midsummer last year. Tried to attend the party. I had never heard anything from LPNM. I signed up to pay dues, because I heard that was the first step you gotta make. Reached out to the chair. Well, actually, the chair called me once I put in my dues, because in my email, I said, you know, I wanted to help McArdle, you know, get to the position in the LNC. I received a quick phone call, and ever since then, it's really just been these guys within the LPNM board. There's, like I said, about nine of them that have really been just pushing as hard as possible to increase dues, increase requirements to participate. I've sent many emails trying to get them to really just calm down. They've been, they've just been very aggressive, very moving fast with a lot of this constitutional convention stuff. And it's kind of put us at odds, and it's not getting a lot. And not a lot is happening, because we're trying to catch up with what they want. But at the same time, there's just, there's nothing else that they want to do. I've done door knocking for them. And, you know, the big thing I hear from people when I do door knocking is these guys care about ballot access. They want to get signatures for ballots, and then that's the end of it. That's the last that you hear of these people, and they're gone. And it's been a, it's been a big problem. And so this last one, you know, we try and do stuff to the T. But this last convention, which you guys will talk about, you know, it's been, they operate in a gray space that is very convenient for them. And they always seem to, you know, wiggle through the rules and the bylaws. And, you know, somehow our members don't get our qualifications. You get people paying monthly dues, and then they don't get to participate, because maybe they're $15 off, you know, off their balance. And then they get to a convention, and then they find out, oh, you know what, you're $15 short. Guess you don't get to participate. And it's always the same nine people, who, no matter what the rules are, their dues are always paid. They're always at the meeting, and they're always trying to change the Constitution and bylaws. And, you know, I hate to give them, you know, I hate to say something about them when they're not here to speak for themselves. But I'm coming in as a third person. I wasn't old Mises Caucus. I don't know what's happened. I'm just a guy that wants to see the LPNM, you know, grow, because it's been a party in decline for the past several years. And they don't seem to care. They seem like they're willing to tank the party to a minor status for some kind of social club. And so that's just a little bit of, you know, a little bit of backstory here for some of the stuff you guys are gonna see. I don't actually know how this meeting works, but, you know, it looks like you guys are gonna go through a lot of paperwork. But this is just kind of stuff on the back end. And I'm always happy to answer questions and stuff, too. But that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Do any LNC members have any questions for Tyler right now, before we move on to hearing from Ms. Hauntz?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
I believe Karen and Harless had her hand up first, though, so.
Ms. Harless, did you want to ask questions, or are you just sort of waiting to speak? Like, and give a separate opinion?
I was waiting to speak, but while we do have Tyler, I have just some related questions, just in general, because this may come up at a later time. Tyler, I just wanted to confirm publicly. I did some work for you back in January and February regarding the now-admitted-by-all-parties illegal convention that the LPNM had in January. And at that time, when I had agreed to assist you, one of the conditions I had, which you agreed to, was that all the letters and interactions could be made public. And in fact, I forwarded them to the LNC list to be made public with your consent. But I just wanted that on the record, that I did have your consent at the time to publicly discuss that situation.
Yes, ma'am. We did discuss that, and Karen and Harless has been very transparent about the rules and the, I guess, the extent to which she could participate. And then after she's become secretary, you know, she's been very clear about, you know, what her what her level of involvement could be. And, you know, and has, mainly, oh, at this latest convention, it's been through a woman named Sylvia Arrowood, that we've kind of had, we've learned a lot about parliamentarian procedure. So, yeah, she was somebody that we reached out to, just because nobody at the time knew how to write anything publicly or formally in a way that these people at LPNM would ever understand. And so she's just been really good about putting what I wanted us to convey onto paper in a language that you guys would get. And yes.
Thank you, Mr. Askin. There was just some concerns expressed by members that I was publicly discussing the January situation. And I just wanted it to be clear that was with your consent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tyler?
I think Connor does.
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Yes, Tyler. A big topic of revealing some of the documents that I've seen detailing this situation. What can you tell us about the notice that you in particular got in regards to the business that would be conducted at this convention?
Is this in regards to the July convention?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, so in terms of my experience, it was about 30 days before this convention. We saw, somebody notified me of a change to the LPNM.us website, that it said there was a constitutional convention to email the Secretary of the LPNM, Frederick Snoy, and for a link. I so that was 30 days before the convention, because they have to do that within their bylaws. So I think I waited. I waited probably till about two weeks, or maybe about a week before, because I had heard from several members that they had emailed the Secretary, and they were not getting any responses. And this was, this was a, kind of seemed to be a previous, what I thought was a tactic that they were using, where they tend to be really slow to respond to stuff. In the event, the last convention that I was, I was, I guess, contesting January 6th, it was very hard to get any information from the Secretary of LPNM. So I emailed him, and then I emailed him again the next day, and then I emailed him again the next day. Finally, I had to confront the Chair, Chris Lucchini, about this. This was probably about four days before the convention, at which point we were notified that anyone who didn't pay their dues after March, the March 5th convention, was ineligible. So it seemed like there was absolutely no intent to reach out to anyone who was messaging that didn't already have their dues paid, but had to have known about the March 5th rule in the bylaws, which was very, I don't know how the 15 people that made it there did know. But that was it. That was the only extent. No text, no tweet, no Facebook, no email. I was told that there was an email. I haven't, I never received one, and I don't know of many others who did. Maybe the one that most likely would have been would be Elizabeth Hauntz, but that was it.
Okay, hold on. I have a question. You got.
Oh, and the official notification, the only official notification by email I received was after I paid the LPNM $72, 48 hours before the convention, after I got a phone call from Chris Lucchini telling me that if I pay the dues, I'll get a link to the meeting. And because another thing about the email was, I was requesting an agenda. I had no idea what this convention was about. So it was really only, yeah, 48 hours before the convention, but like maybe a couple hours after I paid my dues, that I received any official notification by email.
Okay, follow-up question. So the 30-day notice that went out did not include an agenda, and the agenda, you got 48 hours before the convention. Did that include any discussion or notice of what the actual questions and proposals would be conducted at the convention?
It had a copy of the Constitution and bylaw changes. There was a brief summary of the agenda, but there were apparently things that were passed that were not in the agenda, like increasing the terms for board members from, I think, like three to five years. I'm not exactly sure about that. The best person to ask would probably be Mike Blessing. He was in the room about that. But yeah, so there was no agenda on the website.
Thank you.
Okay, let me jump in here real quick. This is gonna get, I don't want to jump all over the place, but it might just happen anyway. The March, the issue with you needing to have renewed your dues, when were you supposed to renew your dues, according to?
Greater than 30 days before the March 5th convention. So, yeah, just the act of putting it up 30 days was not.
30, more than 30 days before the March convention?
Yes, ma'am.
Where was that written down, anywhere where you would be aware of that?
In the Constitution and bylaws, that would be the only place that I was aware of, because nobody had notified us.
Okay, so it was written in the Constitution and bylaws, and the Constitution and bylaws are valid or not valid? What's your contention?
We could not, oh, that was the other thing. I could not get Lucchini to confirm exactly which Constitution and bylaws were valid, because they had made two, yeah, previous changes, or prior changes.
So correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be completely wrong. It's that in order to participate in any sort of convention going forward, you needed to have your registration all taken care of, more than 30 days prior to the March convention. So it wouldn't have mattered if this convention was in July or August or September. The 30 days prior to March was the thing that was important? Is that right?
No, no, no. It had to have been 30 days before any constitutional convention. So, yeah, which is strange that they had one in April, because if they reset in May, I don't know exactly when that April one was. But, yeah, it's that any yearly dues that you paid, they reset after a yearly convention, this one being the March convention. So if you paid, yeah, $60, you're now back to zero. It's day zero is the yearly convention that they did.
Okay, confusing, but I think I understand. Okay, that's the end of my questions. Anybody else have questions for Tyler? I do want to make sure we get to Ms. Hauntz and Mr. Martin.
I did have some follow-ups now, and I'll probably have the same follow-ups for Mr. Hauntz. And I do have some questions for Mr. Blessing, if he is willing. But, Mr. Askin, so I understand, until you called the Secretary and got in touch, you got no advance notice of the July 12th convention. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what about the March convention? Did you, 30 days prior to the March convention, get any kind of email?
Not that I'm aware of. I do remember us having to email the Secretary and then having to, once again, go up the chain to email Mr. Lucchini asking for a date and time for the March convention, because it was, I remember it was very difficult to, we didn't know what the exact date was, and I don't believe it was on the website.
And I think you already answered, never mind, you did. So I'll ask Elizabeth or Mike Blessing if he would happen to know. Thank you, Tyler.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Tyler, I'd like to hear from Ms. Elizabeth Hauntz right now.
Oh. Do I need to unmute her?
I have asked Ms. Hauntz to unmute, but she has to acknowledge on her end.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, I was trying to unmute myself. Usually never a problem for me. Now, okay, I had found out, I think from, I think from my blessing, it was about three or four weeks before the convention that he had messaged me that there was gonna be this special convention. And so I went to the website. I emailed. I did not, at the convention in March, I did not, I came as an affiliate member. I did not join the party at that time. Although it was very strange, Chris Lucchini greeted me as if he'd known me forever, said I was a lifetime member, and gave me a thing that said I was Elizabeth Haynes. I had to break the news to him that I was not Elizabeth Haynes. Anyway, it was just chaos. Anyway, I did not join at that time, because I wasn't sure. And evidently, certain people that joined in March, they had their dues reset. It was just a mess, or they joined before the March. It was just so confusing. Anyway, I did not join at that time. So Mike had told me. So I went to the, it says, email the Secretary. So I emailed the Secretary. I said, please send me a link. You know, what do I need to do to participate? Crickets, okay. I sent three different emails to the Secretary, got no response at all. Then I sent an email to Renata Banks, who is the field coordinator. because usually I can get ahold of Renata when I can't get ahold of anybody else. Renata did not respond to me to the day of the convention, um, and told me she couldn't help me. Gee, thanks, Renata. So then I had, uh, but by that time I had emailed, like, it was like forty-eight hours before the convention. I had emailed Chris Lucchini, who again, uh, I said, uh, I had asked him, and, and then he, it was, his response to me was kind of odd. So then I saw other email, because I'm on the Mises Slack, and there were other emails posted where Mr. Lucchini had said that, had told other people that, and this was the following day, that if they paid their dues before 5:00 PM that day, that they would get a link. So I paid my dues, and then I emailed Mr. Lucchini again, and he sent me a link. So, and that I could participate, and that's what he had told these people on the email. You look on the website, and on the website, it just says, if you pay your dues, you can become a caucus, you are a caucus member, that you need to be a, a registered libertarian and a member of the party, and then you're a caucus member. So, that's what I did. And, um, then I was, uh, you know, then we were all summarily unlinked, I guess, once, uh, the parliamentarian gave her, her opinion on that. And, uh, but then the day of the convention, well, and then it was hard, as, as Tyler and others are saying, it was hard to find out what was, what they were having the special convention about. And so, we finally received, somehow I received through the grapevine, a copy of what the proposed changes were. And I emailed Mr. Lucchini, and I told him that he was seeking, and I really think it's because, because of the affiliate members, and when we had, before 2017, the party had always been, we had always wanted, we had been open to anybody that wanted to come in and help, to come in and help, and to be part of the party, and to attract new members, and to, and so we had affiliate members, and that was any registered libertarian could come, and they could feel as a part of the convention that they could help to nominate candidates. So he wanted to take that language out. And I told him, you are take, you are taking away the power, and, and I believe it was directly as a result of, uh, Karen Bedoni coming in with her campaign, and, um, she was nominated to be the gubernatorial candidate. And I guess some people didn't like that in the inner circle. And so, they are now, they were now trying to get rid of the affiliate language so that only they could, I guess, nominate people for the entire state of New Mexico, that the registered libertarians in the state wouldn't have the, any say, that it would only be this group of fifteen or so people, excuse me, maybe. So, anyway, I told him, I said, you know, we will sue you, we will try to sue you if you do this. And so then, um, after that, the day of the convention comes, and we, um, you can't hear anything, it's just chaos, all you can hear is Chris Lucchini, and then he starts up the YouTube, and then he has to stop the comments because I had written on the comments, Ella Chauvin Levin is trying to get in, she's, she cannot get in, you're starting the meeting without her, and she wants, you know, she's trying to get in, you're not letting her in. And then it was said that, because she had said unpleasant things about LPNM and what they were doing, that they weren't gonna let her in. That was said during the, the meeting evidently, or words to that effect, by a woman whom, I don't know who it was, because we couldn't fig, I couldn't figure out who that was talking. So, but anyway, I received a message that had a telephone number and a PIN, and I think I received it from Mike Blessing, because he was actually there and he got to vote, and he, he was there for the whole thing, so he's got more information than I do, because I couldn't hear the whole thing. So, um, I called that, and then they said, well, who's calling on this line? And I, I unmuted myself and told them, you know, who I was, and they said brusquely, you're not invited to this meeting. And I said, I realize that, but nobody can hear you. We can't hear you, and this is the only way that I can hear is to call in. So, Chris Lucchini did one polite thing, he didn't hang up on me, he just muted me for the rest of the, the convention, so I could at least hear it. Then, he had decided, um, that he was, he wanted to withdraw his proposal to, uh, get rid of the affiliate, get rid of the, um, affiliate language. He wanted to withdraw that. But the rest, everybody else said, no, they wanted it. And then they decided, well, let's just change it to, instead of affiliate members, which affiliate members, the definition of them are registered libertarians in the state of New Mexico. They decided to change it to registered libertarians in the state of New Mexico. So, they changed it, it's a change without a meaning of significance. But at least they didn't take that out. But other changes were made that, um, that Mike knows more about. And, and it just was, nobody could, at the time that it happened, nobody could hear it, nobody could participate. What was said on the website was extremely misleading. What was said by Mr. Lucchini was misleading to people. And, um, you know, I just want to know if we do have any cause of action. If we have a cause of action, I'll pursue it. If we don't have a cause of action, then, then we don't. But, um, and I, I've told people, don't ask for refunds, because Lucchini was saying, I'll give you all refunds. Don't ask for refunds, because you want to make sure that you are all paid up for the next, uh, secret meeting that they call. Because this is, um, when they took over these same people, this same group of people, when they took over the, uh, party in 2017, they lambasted us because we had like, sort of a, an apprenticeship that if you wanted to be, you know, that, that we wanted you active in the party for two or three years before you asked to be Chair on the Central Committee. We, you know, and, and then, you know, they lambasted us for this, and then they come in and they make all these changes. I think their bylaws are totally foobar, I can't figure out what is the real bylaws. Lucchini himself said that he gave the parliamentarian the 2021 bylaws because the rest of the bylaws that they have voted on, it was all illegal, it, because none, it wasn't valid, anything they'd done. And I'm just like, well, how do you know that anything is, is right at this point? So, um...
That's, that's kind of where I'm going with this, is we're trying to figure out what's actually, what's what, right? What's valid, what's invalid, what are we even supposed to be looking at? Because it's, I'm, I'm unclear.
Right, and, yeah, everybody, everybody is. And I have yet to get a response from the secretary about anything, um, from my emails. But I'm not asking for refund, I'm staying, I joined National, and I joined, um, the state party, and that's why I've told other people to do, because I said, we have to, if we're gonna make changes, we have to keep our, you know, it may be inconvenient, it may be expensive, but if we want to regain control of this party from this group of basically tyrannical people who, like, and as he's talking about, want to use it for their own means and for a social club. And I have one, I have one other thing, and then I'll, I'll be done, is that in 2017, there was a man named Mr. Clenard. Mr. Clenard passed away. He left a hundred thousand dollars to the National Party. He left a hundred thousand dollars to the state party, to the LPNM. Burley Kane, in specific, through Nick Sarwak, got wind of this. This was the basis, along with David Clements, along with, uh, some others, got wind of this and sought to then come in and take over the LPNM. And because we were open, it was easy for them to do. Perhaps we were naive, but we were, we were trying to build a party, anyway. Hindsight's always 2020. However, we do not know where that, and that is important because current candidates should be able to get five thousand dollars to run. But, there is no accounting for where that money went. The, the Secretary of State said they could only spend five thousand a year. And I suspect, I don't know, but maybe they don't want anybody seeing whatever happened, like, they don't want control out of their hands, because then people would see what happened to that money. I do not know. So that's it, thank you.
No, you're, you're good, you're good, you're good. I, I think Ms. Harless has a question for you, for, for everyone listening. I get that some of the people who are gonna air their grievances, it's gonna be a little bit long-winded. I'm trying to be mindful of the fact that they sat through a convention that was pretty painful. I sat through it myself, and, you know, they couldn't hear anything, and they're really frustrated, and there's been a lot of tension and rage building up over at least a year. So I just want to give people a chance to speak their mind. And, and keep in mind, guys, also, we're not gonna be taking any votes. I appreciate you taking time out of your Saturday for this, but let's just try to slug through it, get through it. So then, you know, it doesn't have to take up more of our lives later down the road. But, but anyway, um, go, go ahead, Madam Secretary.
Okay, I have some of the same questions that I had from Mr. Askin, Ms. Hahn's. But, but I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding you. First, are, are you, do, are you a dues-paying member? Whether or not you, you've paid the entire seventy-two dollars? Are you a monthly or lifetime member of New Mexico?
I am a current member, but I did not join thirty days before this most previous convention.
Okay, that, that helps, then that eliminates, um, one of my, um, my other questions, just one second here. And actually, you know, I'm not gonna have any additional questions, though. I will, once again, if he wishes to, obviously, he doesn't have to. I do have some questions for Mr. Blessing, if he is, if he's willing, um, to, to talk. I, I won't ask again, because I, this would be the second time, I just wasn't sure. He heard the first time, I'm not trying to pressure him.
He says, yes, I'm willing in the chat.
Okay.
Let's get him unmuted.
Well, I think Frank Martin was first.
He was, Frank has his hand up, so the way I would deal with that is, if you have short questions for Mr. Blessing, I think go right to it. But if you think it's gonna be long, let's, let's hear from Frank first.
I think we should hear from Frank first. Mr. Blessing was actually at the convention, so I probably will have the most questions for him.
Got it, okay, so, um, Frank, whenever you're unmuted, we would like to hear from you. And Ms. Hahn's, we're probably gonna come back to at some point, so hang tight, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, so, uh, I, I have made a few notes here about the, uh, the convention that I'd just like to put on the table. First of all, there was a general lack of order and extensive delays. And during one pause, the, one pause, the stream was just abruptly ended without adjournment, and never came back. So, um, the, uh, and the, the screen sharing was, uh, completely blurry and unreadable. Furthermore, no quorum was established at this convention. The, the, I, I, I question the proprietary, propriety of officers calling a special convention and, and not placing it on the agenda to extend their terms. This ought to be done at regular conventions. And, uh, it ought to be on the agenda. The Chair can be heard, uh, during one of the delays, could be heard on a phone call stating that there were five or six members who couldn't get into the convention. And, uh, there were various streaming issues, uh, which blocked a substantial portion of the proceedings, and only the Chair could be heard. So I really don't know how people could, how there could be any effective, uh, discussion of anything on that, uh, in this convention. Furthermore, uh, I note that the Constitution of March 2021 establishes delegate requirements only for the annual state convention. It specifically states that their requirements are for the annual state convention. There are no delegate requirements stated for other conventions at all. And, uh, that, I guess that, I'll end it there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Harless, did you have any questions?
Go for it. Okay, um, so, um, Mr. Martin, were you a delegate at that convention? Or were you just watching, you know, like as a member of the public?
Unfortunately, I was, uh, watching as a member of the public at the time, I'm now a member.
Okay, um, and, so you weren't a member prior?
I was not.
Okay, all right, that answers my questions.
Last question, uh, Mr. Martin, did you pay dues to the party, to the New Mexico Libertarian Party at any time bef, before your most recent dues payment?
Yes, um, I was Vice, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Vice Chair of the LPNM around, uh, 2000 or 2001.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Martin before we get to Mike Blessing? Okay, if not, uh, Mr. Martin, if you have time to stick around, that would be great. Otherwise, we appreciate the time you've given so far. And then let's get, uh, Mr. Blessing unmuted, um, and I know Ms. Harless would like to ask him some questions. I'd like to hear from him as well. Okay, Mr. Blessing, if you're there, if you're unmuted, let us know. I see you on the participants list.
He's not muted.
Okay.
So, maybe he's looking for a microphone, or?
Let's see. Oh, jeez, he says, I'm unmuted, can you hear me? I cannot. So here's what I want you to do, I want you to go down and click that little arrow next to your microphone that says mute. Click that arrow, and when it says, select microphone, see what you've got. And if you're speaking, try, try clicking something else. Does that make sense, everyone?
Yeah, Mike, your audio settings are at that point, and sometimes it has it selected to something odd.
Right. I'm gonna screenshot real quick, so you can see what I'm talking about. Go in here. No, maybe this is not gonna be helpful. Oh, here we go, mute, see this little thing right here? I'm gonna go in right here and see where you're at. There we go.
And Madam Chair, I did note, Mr. Blankenship has arrived.
Okay, great. Okay, so while we are waiting to see if Mr. Blessing can figure out his microphone, let's see if we can kind of take this apart in a couple other ways. One of the questions that I would like to ask, and anybody can answer, is what grounds, quite frankly, does the National Party have to get involved? Sort of a loaded question, because this is a loaded meeting. So let's just try to address that, because I'm sure a lot of people are wondering. Anybody?
I have my hand raised, Madam.
Oh, yes.
I mean, Madam, Madam Chair.
Madam raised.
Madam raised, why not? Okay, um, first of all, um, I do hope the LNC reviewed the summary that I previously, um, sent over, because I actually think there's a proceeding question. Before we can ask what the LNC can do about the thing, we have to make sure there is a thing. I do think most definitely there is. There obviously is a lot of complaints from members where I think they're perfectly valid complaints that they, they could have against your state party, but that they would need to handle that in elections in their own state. However, there are things which, um, are fundamental errors and violations of member rights. Like the fact that this is now... Like the fact that this is now the fourth consecutive illegitimate convention that the New Mexico Party has had. I know that Mr. Lucchini disputes that the March Convention was illegal. This is not a subjective thing. Their bylaws, or it's actually a constitutional provision objectively says they have to put a certain type of notice on their website thirty days ahead of time. Their convention was March fifth. You can go to the Wayback Machine yourself and see that the first date that notice was posted was February fourteenth. Extremely late. So their March Convention is invalid. So calculating dues from the expiration of the March Convention is invalid because there wasn't a convention in March. Their last valid convention was March twenty twenty-one. So any members that paid in the twelve months prior to June twelfth, which is thirty days before this July twelfth convention back to June, June twelfth, twenty twenty-one, were valid per their constitution and bylaws, voting members that should have been given notice and invitation to this meeting. They were not. I have absolutely no doubt, and this doesn't require hearing from New Mexico. These are objective, verifiable facts that you can go look at yourself. You can look at their constitution and bylaws and see that they blew notice. None of this requires any kind of motives. None of it requires anything but basic parliamentary knowledge and looking at their website. So there is not a valid convention in July in which they made constitutional changes because of notice requirements. They also, again, didn't allow voting members to attend. So now we've established there is a thing. I think it's abundantly established. So then the next question is, what can the LNC do? Okay, so I just wanted to lay the foundation for there even being something for us to talk about. Obviously, we have precedent in Delaware and Massachusetts that if the Chair of the party was in question, there's obviously something we can do. That's not the case here. I know some people were concerned because their March Convention is illegitimate, but the Chair was not elected at that convention. He was elected in twenty twenty-one. It does raise a very serious question about the rest of their board, though. Their executive committee is valid. The rest of their central committee was not validly elected because there was not a convention in twenty twenty-one. However, that's not something the LNC has ever got involved in in the past. Their Vice Chair is valid, their Chair is valid, as far as I know. However, there are two things the National Committee has to know in order to properly interface with its delegates. One is the identity of the Chair. That's been established in spades with Delaware and Massachusetts. But I would assert there's a second fact that the National Party has to know. What constitution and bylaws are governing that party? We cannot know our responsibilities to them, them to their members, without knowing what is the valid governing documents in place. So one thing I do think the National Party can do is, is recognize that their July twelfth convention was illegitimate and that the constitution and bylaws that they are operating under is their March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one bylaws. I think we can do that, and in fact, I think we have to with this much proof. And of course, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but as everyone else knows, if we think that the level has risen to the, to the level of high egregiousness, we could always disaffiliate New Mexico. I'm not suggesting that, but the question was, what can the LNC do? I think those are the two options that the LNC has, that we can say their March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one convention. I mean, uh, which you might call it, uh, constitution and bylaws are the ones presently in effect. And just move on from there and treat that party under that and encourage their state party members to do likewise and let them straighten it out at their next convention. Mr. Lucchini could always call a valid constitutional convention with a valid notice and allow all the voting members to attend if he still wishes to make these changes. Nothing is stopping him from doing that. So, um, but one thing I, I did want to bring up because I do find this one action particularly egregious. Apparently, there was an attempt at a constitutional convention in April with the idea that only people who paid their dues prior, thirty days prior to whatever date that was and after their last convention, which he asserts is March. So what he effectively did was try to call a constitutional convention in April in which the only people that would be allowed to vote is a small circle of life members. Is he allowed to do that? Yes. But I find that kind of thing very, very egregious.
Okay, let's go down the list and let's hear from some other people who have their hands raised. I'd like to hear from Mr. Richard Brown, our Parliamentarian.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. By the way, if my audio is not good, tell me and I can use headphones. Basically, I, I concur with everything that Ms. Harlow just said. I was not sure as to the terms of, of officers. I was thinking that, that if, if the term of their chair is for one year, then the status of their chair is, is at issue. If it's for two years, then it's not an issue. But as far as the options that, that the LNC has, I think that was your question. Of course, you have the right to determine who to deal with, who, who are the officers of the New Mexico affiliate. You have the, the inherent right to determine who to deal with. And then, of course, there's the option of disaffiliation. And I don't know of much in between those two that, that you can do other than exerting some pressure. But essentially, I just wanted to see that I can, I concur with Ms. Harlow's statements that she made a while ago. I concur with the synopsis that she prepared, that she sent to everyone. And she and I had conferred on some of that before she prepared her report. And, and of course, I maybe I'm getting a step ahead here, but it is my opinion that the, the July twelfth convention was not valid. It was due primarily to lack of notice. And also because we had, don't yet have any evidence that electronic conventions are permitted.
Very good points. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Let's talk down to Mr. Joseph Becklin now. You've got to unmute yourself. You are still muted.
Thank you. My thumb did not push the button properly. Yeah, I've got some follow-up questions on what was just brought by Karen Anne. Specifically, this, like, I was pretty well convinced of the illegitimacy of the recent convention, the lack of notice of the March Con- or May Convention?
March.
Forget it. March, of the March Convention. And, and therefore, the, the disenfranchi- this disenfranchisement of members there. But what would that look like for us? Like, if we're not going to disaffiliate, if we're not going to go there, what does it look like to simply assert that? You know, as the LNC, we don't accept their constitution and bylaws changes and, uh, and, and encouraging their members. I just, I just don't see how that looks as far as actual, you know, other than basically being a strongly worded letter. And so I'm, I'm hoping for a little elucidation there.
May I answer, Madam Chair?
Please do.
Okay, how would look, look immediately after such a motion would be a strongly worded letter? But I've since learned that when there's an action you need to take, even if you think it's something that doesn't really do anything at the moment, you find out later on, it does do something. Because one of the changes, and I don't know whether it passed or not, because the audio cut out and that would be one of the questions I wanted to ask Mr. Blessing, is it seems apparent to me, and I'm not imputing motives. I'm just looking at it on the face because this is, uh, motives are irrelevant. This is the fact of the matter. One of the changes proposed takes the power away from the members of the Libertarian Party of New Mexico to disaffiliate themselves from the National Party and puts it in the hands of the State Committee with a really low threshold. It looks to me as if the Board might be setting themselves up to disaffiliate. So if we as a National Committee say, your changes are not valid, we don't have to recognize any future disaffiliation that Board votes to do. And if members want to come in and elect a new Board, we don't have to recreate a whole new affiliate. Because it, it looks to me like that is a possibility. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that's one reason why we need to do this. Also, if there is a future dispute as to the identity of the Chair, let's say Mr. Lucchini resigns or Mr. Lucchini is removed or any number of things that could happen. And there's a dispute, we have to know what their parliamentary authority is. One of the changes they allegedly made in July is changing their parliamentary authority from Robert's Rules of Order to something that nobody in the party knows, which is the American Institute of Parliamentary Standard Code, which I'm going to learn now. You know, I guess I could thank the New Mexico Party for giving me that motivation. But that's another thing that will become very important if there are future disputes. Mr. Blessing, now we can hear you, but if you can mute just for the moment. So those are why it's important to do this, even though, will anything immediately change once we, if and when we send this strongly worded letter? No, but it will, it may become important over the next two years.
Okay, so that's, that's very helpful. You know, when we're thinking about what happened with various other part, uh, state parties disenfranchising members, there were things like rivalrous, uh, 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 you know, party, you know, you know, which one was the correct party, which one was actually following the bylaws was in question. That was basically the lever point for the Libertarian National Committee to act previously. So this could be like, this, this would basically have a, an open space for that to happen. And are we encouraging that? These are things that, you know, we, people would want to take, you know, cautious steps and careful steps with, um, as far as doing things that respect their bylaws, respect their. But, you know, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be necessary because of egregious and repetitive, you know, disregard for member rights. So that's all I have to say.
And, and there's something I would like to add because it came up in comments. And if, from what I understand, and I'm, I'm not encouraging or discouraging this, I'm completely staying out of it. If some, some New Mexico members have talked about perhaps filing something in state court. If they do that, the state court needs to know what their bylaws are and it will give weight if it says that the national organization recognizes the Libertarian Party of New Mexico's bylaws are those dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Now, there's also something else I want to put on the record and first say, I have no desire to do this to New Mexico or any other state. But I do think we have full grounds to disaffiliate it if we want to. I think what happened is absolutely egregious. However, I have no desire to pull the nuclear trigger.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Let's, let's go down the, the list now and we hear from Mr. Tynewich because we haven't heard from him yet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's unfortunate to the, that the online convention described that the audio was of such poor quality that people were complaining about it. And, uh, you know, that's a, that's a difficulty that certainly happens. I can say, relative to the LPNM Chair, Mr. Lucchini, I've had the opportunity to observe him lead a total of two meetings. Both were caucus meetings at our convention. And, uh, you know, Mr. Eglin can disagree with me if he'd like to, but I, I believe he held, uh, I conducted those meetings fairly appropriately, giving people an opportunity to comment, et cetera. Having said that, regarding the matter at hand, as my friend, Mr. Phillies, has mentioned in the chat, I don't believe that there is a role for the LNC in this matter short of making a disaffiliation. I think it would be actually out of order to actually consider a strongly worded letter, only because, again, not part of our role. Our affiliates, I don't have to tell you, but I'll just say it, are heavily independent and like to stay that way. And interfering with what is clearly an intra-affiliate dispute is, in my view, a, a bridge too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the next comment by Mr. Hagopian.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I kind of figured that that type of comment was going to be made, which is why I'm asking this question. I believe that a lot of people will have that exact question that Mr. Tynewitz just posed. So I want to reiterate with Mr. Brown, if he's available. What I heard him say is that he agreed with everything in Karen Anne's letter from recognizing the officer to recognizing who we deal with in the state. What I didn't hear him say is that we are allowed to basically say which we think is the correct bylaws. So I just want to hear what he has to say on that strongly worded letter option, just so we can have it on video and, and understand where his position is on that.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Hagopian, honestly, I've not given any thought to whether you or to what extent you can determine which bylaws are the legitimate bylaws. I'm actually having to give that some thought. I think I think you can, I think, as I'm thinking back to some judicial committee opinions, I'm thinking that's something that, that might be within your, your realm of, of, of options. But it, it's a good question. I, I do not have a ready answer for you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Pantke next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to also kind of address the issue of LNC involvement here in that this will, you know, be, uh, one, again, of several places where we've had to deal with state leadership, state bylaws, how conventions are conducted and so forth. Just in general, I'm unsure, and I, and I thank Mr. Brown for, you know, expressing some, you know, trepidation at ruling on whether or not we can say what their bylaws are. However, as is in the case of Delaware, New Hampshire, Oregon, and so forth, there is the, we do have to deal with the question of who the leadership in the state is. And I, I do feel that the LNC can say, for the purposes of state leadership, how, announcing how we would go about determining and validating the state leadership at that party, right? So if there is a, if there are members that we're working with in that state party that, you know, are, that their legitimacy is in question, we are placed in the position and had been in two previous instances in the previous term in the position of having to interpret their bylaws, which is also understanding, well, which bylaws are we going to interpret, right? And we can make a forward-based decision. And I do think as an advisory capacity of the LNC to help New Mexico in dealing with a potential future problem of state leadership. Let's say there's a new state chair elected under new bylaws, and then we say, hold on, wait a minute. You know, that the bylaws that you elected under were never valid because there was never valid notice period. Then for us to say forward time, hey, guys, we don't think that when you conduct executive committee, you know, and elect a chair and get an executive committee in the next regular convention that you do or any special convention that could be authorized under their bylaws, that those are, you know, that, that you're doing it under a set of bylaws that we're not going to recognize. We're going to be looking towards this other document to look at the results of a convention to figure out whether or not somebody is valid. And that does give them the forward ability to actually make any changes, even if they're going to just reassert the same changes all over again in a special convention, that they could be off, you know, that could give them plenty of time to sort this out so that we can all be in agreement on who we're dealing with, which is the precise problem that we've had in two extra states. It's, um, so I do think that we can make some advisory statements. I, I think that saying that us declaring which bylaws are valid to them is, you know, treading on an area where I don't think that, I think that our authority to do that is, you know, on the wrong side of gray. But being in an advisory capacity for when, for how we determine who Um, but being in an advisory capacity for when, for how we determine who we're working with is something that's uh in our purview. Uh, I would just like to exit it, but you know, depending upon if we get to this subject in a future meeting, that this is also precisely the issue that I think that we need to be addressing in, in our twenty twenty four convention by the next bylaws committee. In that we need to have a way where we clearly state how we deal with these problems in the future um as they arise. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go back to Ms. Harlos. I do want to hear from Mike Blessing if he's able to hop on though.
Okay, I'm just going to, and, and this is a lot also for Mr. Brown's um benefit as he is, is pondering this. The fact that we can determine who the chairs were dealing with, there's, again, there are certain points of interface that we have to know what are their proper rules that they're operating under is a natural derivative of the fact that we have to know who the chair is. There are two sides of the same coin. We can't determine anything without knowing which set of bylaws is the correct set of bylaws. And there is um a lot of talk about affiliates can basically do what they want. Um, it's true, but it's true up to a point. And we also have a duty to the national members in New Mexico. This is a reciprocal relationship. And to say that we have to know who the chair is and who the bylaws is, that is not interfering in affiliate autonomy. It is us knowing what the bounds of the autonomy are. We have to know what rules they operate under. And I would bring out that it's not just in a dispute over the chair that we need to know what the rules are. We need to know what the rules are, say, in delegate allocations. The credentialing committee chair last time, when they wrote to each state affiliate, asked for a copy of their bylaws because that determines how substitution procedures go. There are many circumstances. We have to know what the bylaws are. The bylaws are the contract between the state party and its members and with the national party. To say that we say this is the valid contract is not anything at all unreasonable or intrusive. And as was brought out, it is not a, a Herculean task if the New Mexico Party and its members, not just its leadership, remember, this is a member-driven party, want those exact same changes passed, all they need to do is have a valid convention. It's not difficult, and they have over, they have like about a year to do it before their next annual convention, or they could just do it at their next annual convention. But, so this is easily fixed by them if this is changes that they really want, and we'd go great. Because it's not actually the changes we're objecting to because we have no right to. We're objecting to the fact that they're not validly done, they're void ab initio, to use a legal term. And I do think this is properly within our scope and is a natural corollary to the, to the well-established precedent now that when there's a dispute with the chair, we need to know who the chair is, and when there's a dispute about delegate alternate, how alternates are seated, we have to know what their bylaws are. So I think this is the lightest possible touch we can have while not ignoring egregious violations of member rights, including national party members that happened in New Mexico.
Okay, so duties to national members. You mentioned understanding the delegate count for the national convention. Anything else that you think is explicitly a duty to a national member?
Well, I think it's a duty to the national member to hear their concerns and take up their cause if their rights have been violated. Otherwise, what's the point of being a national member, really? If we're if we have absolutely no duty to them, and they're, they've either paid a lifetime member or um dues to us. But we also have a duty to our affiliate to do things with the lightest touch possible, or as Walter Block would say, in the gentlest means possible. And I do think the suggestion I proposed is extremely one of the gentlest means possible, and they can correct it easily if they want those changes in their constitution.
Okay. Uh, so one thing that hasn't been addressed yet is whether or how this would impact ballot access. I can't think of any potential way that it would impact ballot access, but I have been dealing with ballot access a lot. I have spoken with two candidates from New Mexico recently. Karen Bedoni and Andrew Kennedy, who have issues going on that are, that are unrelated to this, uh, at least they're not directly related to this. But I'm, I'm curious if and if anybody has an idea, if anything that happens between in the state affiliate between, between now and election times, is anything going to impact candidates? Because this is going to be a question I get from them.
Not so far, Madam Chair.
Okay, good to know. So that's, at least we don't have to deal with that. Okay, let's hear from Mr. Blessing now, and then let's, let's, you know, see if we can kind of bring this to a conclusion after that, start winding it down.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Fantastic. Thank you.
Hallelujah. Um, okay, ask away.
Okay, so Mr. Blessing, you were at that convention. How many voting members were there?
I would say fifteen or sixteen. I didn't see the, the full tally.
Okay, that, that was about what I guessed um when I was listening to it. Um, what exactly was passed? Because it's my understanding, there's a vote after the recording cuts out. Um, and like, what did those votes look like type of thing? And I'll tell you where I'm going with this. Um, even though I, I think the convention is absolutely void on the notice issue alone, I think there's three prongs in which it's void, and one of those prongs is that they excluded enough voting members to make a difference in the outcome. So that's why I'm very interested in the vote totals and how many people were there. But I also just would like to know what was passed.
Um, well, first off, they passed the they wanted, the original proposal was to remove the affiliate membership. And affiliate membership is defined as people who were registered with the Secretary of State as libertarian. And the idea was that people with affiliate membership could vote on candidates for public office at the state convention, but they couldn't do anything else as far as voting on internal business. And apparently, some of the, some of the folks that were in the convention viewed that as too confusing because, for whatever reason. And so anyway, the proposal was to remove that voting member, that that affiliate membership block of language entirely, just nuke it completely. Anyway, so Lucchini then proposed a motion to, that was his original proposal, but when the convention actually happened, he wanted a motion, he put a motion to amend his original motion by leaving that affiliate language alone. And the debate about that was actually kind of hard to follow because it was all back and forth. And, well, for example, Fred Snoy didn't seem to be, you know, this is just so confusing. We have to get rid of this. And my objection was that, you know, save this for an actual in-person convention. So, you know, we give plenty of notice. And instead, instead of nuking it completely, change the word affiliate to associate. And there were, there were a few people that said, well, that's still, that makes it even more confusing. Because remember, there's, there's affiliate members, but then later on down in the constitutional bylaws, I believe it's in section three or four, article three or four, where it's, they talk about county affiliates. You know, county, county parties that are affiliated to the state party. And so anyway, I suggested, and Lucchini was like, yeah, I can, I can change affiliate to associate. And he was, he, at this point, he seemed burned out and fed up, and he was ready to walk away. And in fact, he said that a couple of times during the convention, you know, if, if things don't really go, you know, the way I want them to, well, you know, I'm not sure I can continue on. Um, so anyway, they, apparently the change from affiliate to associate was too confusing. So instead of affiliate to associate, they, it was amended to affiliate to registered libertarian voter. And that passed. Um, there was another, the, the other proposal before that was to change the the executive committee from two-year terms, as, as I understand it to be now, to something like a five-year term for the chair, and then staggered terms for vice chair and treasurer, something like that. And I was, he, he asked for objections, and I was the one who objected, and he's like, thank you, thank you. And apparently, everybody else was just gonna, yes, yes, yes. And so a lot of the convention was, was Lucchini trying to get the tech part of it working. Um, so so it wa- it was kind of funny. If you watch the, the first and second live streams, the first one was basically him trying to get the tech working. The second one, you can only hear Lucchini, from what I understand. I haven't sat through the whole thing. At about forty-five minutes, they went to an executive committee meeting by phone. But I guess Lucchini left his mic on because you can hear, you can hear comments in there from him during that. Um, it was it was a furball. It was a Charlie Foxtrot, I guess you could say. Um, as far as the notice issue, um, I, I'm not exactly sure what the chain of events was on that. Um, when I, I paid my dues for the state party the day before. So.
You paid dues the day before, but you were allowed to participate?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So there's, there's an issue of consistency there. I mean, we have Eliseva trying to get in over and over again.
Yep.
And one, at one point during the meeting, he said, well, you know, it's, it's like you're, it's like you're having a traffic jam on the way to the meeting. I'm not responsible for your inability to get into the meeting.
Yeah. By the way, I listened to pretty much the whole thing. I think I was five minutes late to join.
Um, but yeah, she kept saying over and over again, I'm having problems getting in, and he, she called and and at one point during the, the meeting, um, he said, you know, I've got other people trying to get in here and
Five or six, I believe.
Something like that.
Five or six or up to ten. We can go back because the, the call is, is on YouTube. I took some notes on it.
I think it was five or six, Madam Chair.
So I heard that, I heard you are not invited to this meeting. I believe that was in reference to Ms. Elizabeth Haunt. Does anybody know for sure?
Uh, that could have been. I, before they, I copied and posted the comments from both the, the livestream and the Google Meet session, and I posted them to my blog and
Okay.
Um, also, the, a lot of the comments in the Google Meet were copied and pasted from the livestream by Helen Malinsky.
Yep.
And basically, a lot of it was, she was complaining that people weren't being sufficiently respectful to her in the livestream.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so some of the, some of the things that were said kind of opened the door for us to, well, I'm certainly not going to use the D-word. I'm not talking about disaffiliation, but I like what Ms. Harlos and, and maybe Donovan Pantke said to a lesser extent about figuring out, you know, what bylaws are we referencing? There is interaction between the national party and the state affiliates. It, it, it exists, you know, there's no reason for us to pretend it doesn't exist. What we have to figure out is how involved is it right for us to be? How involved do we want to be? You know, what, what's appropriate? There's definitely precedent for us to weigh in with opinions. It's happened before. I understand people don't like it. I'm not making any rulings. We're not voting on things. But, you know, comments that I heard during the, during the thing that bothered me were acknowledgement that there were voting members who couldn't get in. Um, you are not invited to this meeting. Hearing, hearing from Mike Blessing that, that some people were allowed to participate, so it seems like it was arbitrary. It, uh, the technology issues were crazy. Um, the chair of the party quite frankly saying, we are so fucked halfway through in his executive committee uh call that he failed to mute himself on when he was, and I don't know what he was referencing. I assume that he was referencing the legality of the convention because he was talking about people not being able to get in. And so it is a mess, and I will tell you that I have had at least ten members sending messages up on, about it, and they're very aggrieved and they're very frustrated, and hearing from Ms. Haunt and Eliseva then that they have had problems for like four years. And I don't know about the four years part. I have not tried to dig through more than a year back, but I don't think that it's unreasonable for us to be discussing this now considering the history. That's, that's my opinion on it.
Actually, it's, um, they did their hostile takeover of the party back in twenty seventeen. And so it's, that's, it's over six years right now.
Gotcha.
And, and but now they're ticked off that somebody is trying to do the same sort of thing to them, only be a bit more legal about it. That's the way it seems to me.
Fair enough. And I'm not going to throw stones about someone coming in and taking over a political party or faction wars or anything like that. My focus is just did people follow their rules? If they, if they, if they followed their rules, great. If they got a little bit out of bounds, can they fix it on their own? Is it such a disaster that here we are? And my concern is that that's, that here we are. So let's hear from Mr. Bowen, and then let's hear from Mr. Higopian.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just to, to add, because I, I listened very closely to the convention as well, where um, you had said, uh, we are, you said that you're, said we are so F'd.
Yeah.
Um, but he had also said, and this was definitely in reference to the illegality of the convention, we are so F'd if we pass this. So it was in specific, and he used the full word, not just the initialism.
So maybe he's talking about something that didn't get passed, and if that's the case, then it didn't get passed, whatever, we'll let it go. Um, Mr. Bowen, let's hear from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to take exception to the uh comment that uh some, in some way, we do not have any right or value or uh in actually determining or deciding or having an opinion as to whether a copy of somebody's bylaws or constitution is valid. Um, Article five, section two of our bylaw states affiliate party status shall be granted only to those organizations which adopt the statement of principles and file a copy of their constitution and/or bylaws with the party secretary. That alone tells me we have the right to determine whether those constitution or bylaws are actually valid and were done in a manner that is legal and actually inclusive of every member in a state affiliate. And if we believe that is not the case, then it's incumbent on us to go back to that state and say, hey, we have an issue. We're not sure this was done in a proper manner. Um, not saying we shouldn't not accept them, but we have every right, and as leaders, we should, we have a duty to make sure that those, that constitution and those bylaws are valid. And the reason we have that that issue, the, the reason we want to do that is because if they're not, and we as a board feel that they are not, that they've been done not in, in a good faith or criminal or anything else, then we have the right to disaffiliate. So before we ever get to that point, that's one of the things I would want to know. So to say that we don't have any right to ask questions or offer advice uh or just try and determine as leaders whether those bylaws are valid or not is just a, a total, um, you know, a total lack of due diligence on our part. And it's something that happened often, or tried to happen often in the last term. People tried to put their heads in the sand and just ignore it. And no, it's not our decision. We, we have to give autonomy and all of that. Well, in my opinion, that's total ball. You know, offering opinion, getting information, offering advice, determining as leaders whether it's appropriate so that we can determine whether we do need to disaffiliate and say, hey, let's start all over again, get it right, come back later. We need to do all of those things before we get to any situation where we want to do that. So I believe it's within our right to um decide whether we should send a letter back to New Mexico and say, hey, we have some concerns about whether your bylaws are valid. Explain it to us. I think we have every right to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that bylaw citation. That's pretty corpus delicti. Um, let's go down to Mr. Higopian now.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, wanted to touch on what Mr. Bowen just said and make sure that my earlier comment um was a little more clear. I am concerned that by sending a letter, uh, we have no standing to tell them that their bylaws are not correct. That being said, is, this is the reason I bring that up. Because I don't think that's the proper action to take. If we were to send them a letter that said, you have now held to what appear to be illegitimate commitments in a row and passed new bylaws or passed new rules, um, along the way, this must be rectified or else there will be disaffiliation. That is something I think we can do, and that is very clear that we can do that. So my argument on the letter is not that we should not send a letter. It's that we should send a letter that's within our scope, which is that we can disaffiliate if X, Y, and Z don't happen. And so I am, that is the letter that I am arguing for, rather than telling them which bylaws they have to follow. It's by telling them the past two conventions have been illegitimate. And this must be rectified by X or else disaffiliation will be on the table. It does the exact same thing as what everyone else is arguing for, except it also puts the ball in our courts on what we're actually allowed to do as LNC, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagopian. Okay, so I believe Ms. Harlow's had her head up, and then we're going to talk down to Mr. Tunivich.
Okay, I, I always like to be fair, even when things, um, might not necessarily be the most advantageous for me to bring this up. Um, the bylaw that was just brought up about filing a copy of the bylaws with the national party is not an unambiguous bylaw. Um, I do agree with the interpretation that was given, but it's not the only interpretation. One way to read that bylaw is that they're only required to file their bylaws with the secretary at initial affiliation, and it's not an ongoing duty. However, I don't think that's the best reading of that bylaw because that would also then entail that they only have to ratify the statement of principles at the time of disaffiliation and that they can repudiate it later on and there's no issue. So if, i- i- if the ratification of the statement of principles is an ongoing duty, so is filing a copy of the bylaws. That's my interpretation of that bylaw. But I just wanted to be clear that there are two possible interpretations here, that there is an ambiguity, but I do think the one in which it's an ongoing duty is the most consistent one with the purpose of our party. Um, doing nothing isn't an option here to me. Um, doing some, we, we, if we do nothing, this is going to continue to happen. Um, just, to me, that's a non-option. However, um, with all, because Todd, uh, Mr. Hagopian knows that I love him to pieces. Um, I don't believe in threatening in letters unless it's something we're prepared to do. I don't believe, and I could be wrong, I don't believe this LNC is prepared to disaffiliate. And I also don't believe we have the three force vote to do so. And if we don't and we aren't, don't threaten to do that. That's like the wife, you know, keeps saying, if you don't buy me a car or whatever it is, I'm going to divorce you, but she really isn't going to. Um, unless we, unless we know in our hearts, we have a three-force vote and we're ready to do that. And I could tell you, this secretary is not ready to do that. So don't count me in that three-force. Don't threaten something. Don't pull out the gun unless you're ready to shoot. And maybe, and maybe you all can change my mind. Maybe you don't need my vote. But I think saying what the bylaws are, particularly in light of that, that requirement that they have a valid copy of the bylaws with the secretary is absolutely something we're entitled to do. It is very, as unintrusive as we possibly can be without doing nothing, and they can always fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. So let's hear from Mr. Tunivich.
Tunievich, thank you, Madam Chair. So relative to both Mr. Bowen's and Ms. Harlow's comments, um, uh, my, to my friend, Mr. Bowen, I would say this. Um, you know, you're, I, what I heard you say was because we have a requirement that the affiliates file their bylaws with us that by some extension that is, to my read, not elucidated within the bylaws, by some extension, we take that to read and we have an obligation to determine that those are valid, et cetera, et cetera, that they've been properly approved. I don't, I don't see that. And instead, uh, the, my view is that the filing of those bylaws is a simple administrative requirement and nothing more. Whether it is an ongoing requirement or not, for me, it's, it's kind of irrelevant. Um, it's, it's something they file with the national party and that's it. There's never been a ton more than that involved in my twenty years experience plus with this party. And I'd be very surprised to see if there was in this case. Should we send a letter? I mean, I mean, can, can we send a nice letter that says, hey, we heard from some members? Do you plan on updating your bylaws? You know, something, you know, very, a very light and, uh, conciliary touch? Well, I don't think, I don't think anybody'd mind a, a, a pleasant letter like that, whether it goes anywhere, who knows? But in terms of um, the bylaws itself, administrative requirement, administrivia, nothing, I think, that forces us to take any sort of action in this matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So it's Pacific time, one forty-one. We've been going for about an hour and forty minutes. If we've still got more to do, I would rather just get it out of the way now. Ms., Ms. Harlow's?
Um, this will be very brief. I'm giving notice to the LNC that I intend to make a motion at the July meeting, um, unless somebody persuades me in the upcoming week to withdraw it at the meeting to do what I had suggested, which is informing the Libertarian Party of New Mexico that their, the bylaws that the LNC recognizes that they are operating under is the March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one bylaws. So I'm within the seven days' notice for that to automatically be on the agenda. Um, and that's all I wish to say.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. That's what I was driving at. If anybody was going to make a motion, I am relieved that it's that motion and not, uh, ugly motion. Um, I believe Mr. Eklund already put an agenda item for New Mexico. Am I correct?
He reserved some time, so I will just put it in on there and I'll get the exact wording of the motion on the LNC list tonight.
There we go. So it's already in there as far as I'm concerned, unless we need two agenda items for New Mexico. I think, I think we're good. Okay.
No, I think, I think that's great. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, great. So, so we'll leave it at that. If you want to update the description, um, Ms. Harlow's, that's, that's totally fine. I'll leave that to your discretion. But that, that section was reserved in case there was any action coming out of this. Okay, and I believe Mr. Pinky has his, um, hand up, so let's hear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question because this has come up as a matter, a procedural matter here. Um, has, uh, LP, uh, has New Mexico LP actually filed their amended bylaws with the national party?
I suppose I, I would have to answer that since I'm the person they would. Um, unfortunately, no state parties do. I usually go to their websites and get them myself. My predecessor, Ms. Mattson, did the same thing. There are a couple of state chairs who are absolutely fantastic in sending me things. But generally, they're busy running their state parties. Not, they're, they're, they don't want to mess with paperwork, and I don't blame them. I, I just take care of it. So, so no, they haven't, but that's not unusual.
That's, that's all I wanted to know, just for procedural purposes. Thank you very much.
And Connor has his hand raised, Madam Chair, if you don't see.
Oh, yes, please, go right ahead, Connor.
Uh, I'm not sure if I should amend the motion or if I should just discuss it here.
Turn right onto Eight Mile Road.
But I believe we should draft this letter on the list.
Okay, so there's a couple of ways we can deal with that. Uh, Ms. Harlow's wants to sort of flesh it out.
Continue on Eight Mile Road for three quarters of a mile.
And I think that writing a letter in a meeting is going to be a nightmare. I am, um, I'm wondering if a better way to do it is for us to figure out some bullet points and things we want to touch on. We can do that. We could probably do that on the list. Ms. Harlow's can, can address some things, but I, I don't want to get into like fussing over commas and prepositions.
Uh, my intent, Madam Chair, is to pass, um, a motion to have the letter done. If someone wishes to amend the motion at the meeting as to the mechanics of doing it, I don't care. Um, to me, the mechanics are irrelevant till we actually pass that we want to do it.
Great. That's, that's a good point. Um, Mr. Nipo, any thoughts?
Uh, not at this time. Pretty much just voiced my concern. I, I think, uh, it's.
Turn left onto.
Whatever we settle on, I think this language will be incredibly important, and I think it needs to be worked on together, so we agree on a course of action to ultimately take.
Okay. So my recommendation is going to be that we, we at least agree on a handful of bullet points, of things that should be in there, that just be thinking about this for the, for the future meeting. And that we agree on a couple of things that should not be in there. And like, like threatening disaffiliation, that's been something that's been discussed. We need to probably figure that out at the meeting and make sure that, that we're clear on what can and can't go in there. And then I think we're going to be more comfortable, but, but I'm okay with workshopping it to some extent. Um, okay, any other comments? And at this point, I would also take, uh, additional public comment for one minute for many peo-, for anybody who's not an LNC member, anybody who's listening. If you want to put your hand up, now is the time, because we're going to start winding this down. Oh, we've got Mr. Askin with a hand up. Um, okay, let's, let's hear from Tyler Askin, if that's all right. And Tyler, try to keep it to kind of closing comments or just, just one minute.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Yeah, um, I just want to say thank you all for, for even holding this meeting. And I, you know, I'm seeing some of the, you know, apprehension of you guys stepping in. Um, I'm not asking for a coup. We're not asking for you guys to do anything too harsh, you know? All we want is your eyes on this because they will continue to move as stated before. They've been doing it. They, they rely on kind of us giving them the benefit of the doubt. Um, anyone who's curious, seriously, go email them. The fact that they're not here, they don't want to say anything. They don't want their opinion known. They, they're, it's, and it's going to continue to be a problem for you guys. I don't know what, you know, you guys are worried about the, the power dynamic down the road. I don't know what the power dynamic of them doing what they would do down the road is going to be because they're, they're making moves in one direction. I, I don't know. But, uh, you know, just once again, thanks. And it's just, if you guys pressure, that's all I want. Pressure and eyes so we can continue to do what we want because I have to pay seventy-two dollars every year for these guys. I don't know what the rest of your state dues are, but that's really high. Um, I'm broke. And I have to do that to fight these guys. So making it a state issue, they dominate on the state issue. And anytime I try to do something through the legal way, they're always there with some little thing that I didn't do, but they get to constantly, you know, uh, skirt around all the, all the consequence, all the mistakes, quote unquote, that they make. So just want to clarify that. I'm not trying to do anything too crazy. I want to get this done the right way. I want to, but they won't let me. And so I just want you guys to know about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's hear from Mr. Richard Brown, our parliamentarian.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to respond further to Mr. uh, Hagopian's request of me several minutes ago. If I recall this question, he was asking whether I think the LNC has the authority to determine, you know, which are the, the correct bylaws of an affiliate. And I've given it some more thought. And my, my reaction is basically, I think I agree with Karen and Harlow's, and I, I think that the LNC does have the authority to, to say we, you know, whi- which set of bylaws you are accepting, that you feel like maybe a certain set of bylaws was not, not properly adopted. Um, that opinion's not cast in concrete. That's the way I'm leaning, but that's a decision ultimately for the LNC itself to make. Um, it's, 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 it's yours decision, but I'm thinking that it kind of falls within what I think is your natural authority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Let's hear from Mr. Jonathan Jacobs. Unmute yourself, JJ.
Okay, there we go. Um, Madam Chairman, I just wanted to say that, um, I have been following this. I did take a look at the Delaware opinion of the, uh, judicial committee. And very clearly on page, let's see, on page, uh, seven of that opinion, it does talk about the ability of the, um, LNC to take a look at the bylaws uh, of the organization a- as it would relate to things that, uh, they would be doing, um, in relation to the nationals, such as who the chairman is and who the delegates are. So it does seem that at the very least, um, these, you could determine whether or not the, the actions taken for, for adopting these bylaws would um, interfere with those particular matters. And I would also note that, uh, as I, I think we have seen, that this appears to be an ongoing problem. Uh, there have been two cases, one of which I was more or less personally involved with, um, that have already happened over the last year. And one in several other potential cases that are out there. So I don't think this issue is going away. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you for that observation, voice words. Okay, we've got about one thing left that can happen on this meeting.
I move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Are there any objections to adjourning? Going once, going twice, last chance. I am going to say that we are adjourned at one fifty-two PM Pacific time, uh, four fifty-two Eastern time, if I can count. Okay, thank you all very much. We are done. We will follow up on this with a motion that was described at our July thirtieth meeting. And, um, if there are members from the New Mexico LP who wish to speak, I will make sure that we can arrange for that either through Zoom or a telephone call. I'll make sure everyone can be heard in that meeting. So anybody wants to pass that word out, go right ahead. Uh, the secretary and I will, will make sure that we obviously do our due diligence and all right. But, but thank you all. We're all done. Have a good, have a good rest of your Saturday.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll get you an amended proposed agenda.
Great, thank you.
Nicely done, Madam Chair. Thank you. Bye-bye.